This meeting is called to order. Estela, if you'd please read the call.
Oh, wow.
.........................................................................................................
All right. We have an executive session?
Executive-
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo. I'm sorry. Estela, were you going to say something else?
I was going to read the items of executive-
I'm sorry. I thought you had. I apologize.
Executive-
Put the mic up there to you. Estela, I'm not here. I'm not listening to you.
Executive session, item A, discussion pursuant to section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. Executive session, item B, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to provide advice and counsel in connection with the legal status of proposed labor agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Firefighters Association to include grievances and claims affecting current negotiations.
All right.
May I move that we go to executive-
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Will be an executive session. All right. Estela, with regards to workshop item A, we're going to move that to allow that be presented at the time of number seven, that we call item number seven.
Okay.
All right. I'd ask everyone to please stand.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one indivisible.
Thank you. We have with us the Reverend Greg Fish to lead us in invocation this evening.
The Word of God says in Proverbs 19:21, "Many are the plans in a man's heart, but it is the Lord's purpose that prevails." Let us pray. Father God, we ask that all the plans that will be made on this night and on days and nights to come would prevail because in reality they are your purposes for the good of the people of this great city of Brownsville. We ask that you would give wisdom to all the people involved who are making these decisions and important plans, not just this day but all the days of this year. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. All right. All right. Item one.
Presentation, Employee of the Month.
Mayor, members of the commission, Happy New Year. We welcome our first employee of the month for 2007 January, Charlie Velika. Charlie works for the Parks Department. He's been there for five years. He's administrative tech two. He is an asset to our, to that department and to the city. The courteous voice you hear anytime you call the Parks Department with questions arising for use of parks, tournament play, scheduling, et cetera. He's, he's an example of the employees that we've hired at Parks. He deals with them very professionally. As you know, we're relocating our administrative offices to the downtown old boys and girls club facility, and he's been an asset with that. So, we'd like to congratulate Charlie, and he's got the right name for an employee of the month, Charlie.
(laughing)
With a plaque, designated employee of the month for January, the traditional baseball cap, which he has a lot of, and the pin. And of course, he's eligible for the employee of the year at their, our banquet in December.
Take my hand here, you're late.
And he's got some words for you, and of course, there's skips behind him, and we'll try to keep Skip from talking today.
Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for this honor. It's a great privilege. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank my Parks Director, Mr. Skip Keller, my supervisor, Dora Wobbler, and the rest of the Parks and Recreation Department. Without their help, this wouldn't be possible for me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for serving the city.
Congratulations.
I have to say something about Charlie. He's, he's one of those quiet people you have working for you, but one of the most efficient people I have, and you can't beat people like Charlie.
That's right.
Great family to back him up, too.
Great. Thank you, Skip.
Item two, consent agenda items numbers A through B.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioners Zanlos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item three.
Item three, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint four members to the Brownsville Urban Systems Transit Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor. City Commissioners, Rodney Gomanth, Assistant Director, will be presenting the decision.
Good evening. We're asking for reappointment for three members of our Transit Advisory Committee, Lee Lopez, Alejandro Fuentes, and Edward G. Moore, Jr. Lee Lopez was appointed by Commissioner Arroyo, and the other two, Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Moore, were appointed by Commissioner Bentoncourt, and we're asking that they be reappointed by Commissioners Camarillo and Commissioner Zanlos.
Who would be my appointment?
Pick one. Pick one of those two.
Who are they?
Alejandro Fuentes and Edward G. Moore.
Okay. Well, go ahead and appoint Mr. Moore.
And I'll nominate Lee Lopez again.
Okay. And the other position is a vacant one, who was appointed by-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, no, no.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Camarillo, you're going to nominate Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. Fuentes, okay.
And then you're, I assume you're renominating Lee Lopez.
I'll nominate Lee Lopez.
So, we have one vacancy. It's Commissioner Longoria. Yeah.
Right.
That would give, yeah, that would give Rick, too, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Could I table till the next meeting?
All right. All right. So, let's do it. Yeah, we're going to do it. We have a motion to approve-
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by-
Second.
Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have a motion to approve Mr. Fuentes by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioners Zanlos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And we have a motion by Commissioner Arroyo to reappoint Lee Lopez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the vacancy of Commissioner Longoria will be tabled. We'll leave that open for now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four.
Item four, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Capital Improvements Advisory Kayak Committee.
Honorable Mayor, honorable City Commission, this member must reside in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city.
Does anybody have any-
Mayor, I've been working on it. I can't come up with anybody yet. Anybody else?
No. I, I, I haven't had a chance to work on it. However, this one vacancy shouldn't preclude the process from beginning, which has it or has not? Are the meetings being scheduled?
Our first meeting will be next Friday.
Okay. All right. In the event, well, we're not having a meeting between now and then, so. But we'll try to, we'll try to put this on the next meeting, so we'll try to come up with something. All right. Motion to table by Commissioner Hernandez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item five.
Before you, I'm sorry. Before you move on, may I just mention, in the context of appointing this last kayak advisory member, that the requests for qualifications for the economists have all been submitted, and the deadline has expired, and I'd spoken with Mr. Medina about the possibility of allowing the kayak to be the evaluation committee or least involved in terms of meeting the, the only single economist who, who tendered a responsive request for some qualifications to, to our staff. At the next meeting, if, unless the commission wants to meet with him first, or to reopen the issue of whether we should rebid it, or how to approach that.
Well, the longer we delay, the longer.
My, our thinking at the staff level was that since the, those are the people that have been selected by the commission to do the evaluation and come back with the statutory range that we can charge, that maybe the economists, in meeting with them, that they could make a determination and also provide feedback to the commission about whether or not they think this economist who has submitted his application would be someone that can help them in their process and, and help them bring a more meaningful number back to the commission.
Well, can you, can he meet with them next Friday? Since you're going to have a meeting?
We had already scheduled them to be there, Mayor.
All right. Well, then, let's-
Essentially, it would just be on you-
And then you just put it as an action item for their next meeting.
Based on their recommendation or their, okay. That's fine. That's how we'll do it.
All right. Item five.
Item five, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint four members to the reinvestment number two zone. Order, Richard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this tour's number two is the Migo Land University Park Tours. There's four members that have requested to be reappointed. I'm sorry, three members. That's Ms. Wilson, Sandra Wilson.
Sweeney.
Sweeney Wilson, Mr. David Bencourt, and I'm assuming Mr. Longoria, you as well. And then Mr. Morris Edelstein will be replacing Dino Esparsa that has resigned.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to appoint Morris Edelstein-
Second.
-to replace Dino.
To replace Mr. Esparsa. All right. Motion by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I'll move to renominate Ms. Sweeney.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
I would ask if this City Commission would allow Mr. Troy T. Whitmore to represent me on the tour's number two.
So, your, your motion is to appoint Mr. Whitmore?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That leaves, no, that's it. No, that leaves-
Mr. Bentoncourt.
Mr. Bentoncourt. He's kind of busy now.
Yep.
Let's, I tell you what, why don't we leave that one, and Commissioner Longoria, well, if you don't mind, we'll let somebody else make that appointment. So, okay? All right. We'll leave that one open there. Thank you. Item six.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2006-1470, which provides for the adoption of a program for economic development as authorized by sections 378 and 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, providing for the establishment of neighborhood empowerment zones, sales tax revenue sharing agreements, and such other economic development measures as deemed necessary by the City Commission for applicable state law.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this item was tabled at the last meeting with your instructions to work with the Brownsville Economic Development Council, which we did. The ordinance before you has the Economic Development Council's comments and revisions to it, as well as planning staff, and Mr. goes his comments as well.
You recommending approval, Ms. Sweeney?
Yes, we are.
All right. This is a public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by-
Second.
Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, final public hearing in action to approve the revised Americans with Disabilities Act, paratransit eligibility and recertification application, revised ADA policies and procedures manual, and the newly development ADA accessibility services brochure.
If you would like to give us a short presentation that we were going to do during the workshop.
Right. Rodney will be giving the presentation on this, and I'll let him go ahead and start. Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, we have a very brief presentation. This covers the changes that we've made to our ADA paratransit policies and procedures. We've already had three public meetings in November and December, and this, the policy and the procedures that were in your, your packet were approved by the Transit Advisory Committee in October, on October 12. Brief overview of what ADA paratransit service is. Currently, we provide two kinds of service. We have our fixed route service, which is the big buses that we have on the city streets, and then we have ADA paratransit service for people with disabilities who are unable to use those fixed route buses. We've been, been providing ADA paratransit service since the 90s, when the Americans with Disabilities Act first went into effect. We provide, right now, approximately 180 daily trips, and in a year, we provide about 50,000 trips on our, on our paratransit service. And those are trips that are provided by vans that go curb to curb to our passenger locations, as opposed to the fixed routes, which actually go from stop to stop. So, it's a specialized service.
The mic up a little bit. Thank you.
So, it's a, it's a specialized service that's supposed to be in addition to what we already provide on the fixed routes. Every time a new change occurs, or the policy on the federal level changes, we've tried to stay in compliance, and we've always revised our policy to reflect that. So, this latest effort, on the next slide, represents three separate components. What we did was we revised our manual, which contains all our policies and procedures, and we revised our application, and we also added a, an accessibility services brochure, basically to tell passengers what we, what we provide. As far as the manual goes, we haven't revised it since 2003. Right now, it only covers what we provide on the vans. It doesn't cover all the services that we provide on the fixed routes. For example, on our big buses, we provide wheelchair lifts, and we have dedicated space in the front of the buses for disabled passengers. And really, the whole point of what we're, we're doing here is to improve our service efficiency and our effectiveness. So, we're trying to make sure that we provide the services that we're supposed to be providing for our disabled citizens, and we're also trying to reduce costs. And we're essentially trying to do that by only providing service to people who really qualify under the regulations, where in the past, we allowed people who didn't necessarily qualify under the strict letter of the regulations to ride the buses. With effective enforcement, under the new policy, we'll be able to reduce costs by only providing those who really need the service, transportation.
Could that have gotten us in trouble? Or did it get us in trouble?
No. Essentially, what we were doing is we were being overbroad, so we were providing service to people who could have just-
Utilized regular service.
Exactly, exactly. So, we weren't restricting it to anyone. The major changes that we've made in the policies and procedures, which were in your, in your packet, we've included a broader description of the sorts of services that we provide. I mentioned the wheelchair lifts, the dedicated space for people with disabilities in the bus. We've also eliminated same-day service, which is service that we provide on the same day. When someone calls on the same day, we provide service on that same day. We've eliminated that because it really puts a big constraint on our scheduling. We have to be able to send the vehicles out, and we're never sure who's going to be picked up where. So, what we've done is we've limited the reservation timeframe from at least one day in advance to seven days out, which is what the regulations allow us, allow us to do. We've also limited subscription service. Subscription service is the service that's provided in blocks to people who have repeating appointments. For example, people who have medical appointments every few weeks. We've, we've limited that only to, to certain medical appointments, certain work trips, before it was just open to everyone. And we also polished up the definitions of late pickups, denials, cancellations, and no-shows, and all of those are just ways that we keep track of how people are using the service, whether they're calling in in advance, whether they're canceling within the timeframe that we give them, and that sort of thing. And then the final thing that we did was we put in more flexibility in our eligibility categories for who would qualify. Whereas before, we simply made a yes-no determination, you either were in the system or you weren't. Now, we allow for, for example, temporary eligibility for somebody who has a temporary disability, and we also allow for eligibility to certain locations. For example, somebody might be able to ride the bus to the mall from where they live, but somebody else might not. So, the person who doesn't, who is unable to use the fixed route bus, would qualify for the van service. And our ADA, well, that's, that's pretty much the sum of what we've done. As I said, the Transit Advisory Committee approved the, the new policies and procedures on October 12. So, we've, we've added the revisions, as well as what we got from the public meetings, into what you have in your packet, in the, the new policies. Our ADA coordinator is actually Rebecca Castillo. She couldn't be here tonight, so I was, I was filling in. And that's, that's, that's the sum of it.
Any questions?
Move to close?
Let's make sure. Any comments from the public? All right. Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by-
Second.
Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Would you approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eight.
Item eight, consideration in action on resolution number 2007-001, reaccepting, reviewing, amending, and readopting all of the provisions listed in the documents titled City of Brownsville, Texas amended investment policy and City of Brownsville, Texas amended investment strategy statement.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, way back in September of 1996, we set up an investment policy for the city, and every year, we, we review it and make any changes. And the only changes that we have is that we're updating our investment bankers. We have added Texas Term. That's another investment pool in Texas. And we're also adding some other funds, operating funds, capital improvement funds, and debt service funds. So, with this, we recommend that you approve this resolution that will update our investment policy.
Questions?
All moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by, I'm sorry, Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item nine. Thank you, Pete.
Item nine, consideration in action to adopt budget amendment resolution number 2007-002 to amend the general fund by $88,340 to provide funding for the air conditioning system upgrade at the Brownsville Police Department.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, the Police Department is asking for an upgrade to their air conditioning system, and the funding is not in place, so this budget amendment will provide funding to upgrade their air conditioning system. In the audience, we have Chief Garcia or Commander Avidia that can answer any questions that you may have regarding this item.
I know the commander worked on this. Commander, you, you feel confident and comfortable with this particular proposal? All right. Any questions?
All moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Zanlos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item.
Item 10, consideration in action, if any, with respect to the pending labor negotiations between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Firefighters Association, including all salary, wage, and other matters contained therein.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Alan Ozuna. I'm on the negotiation team for this collective bargaining cycle. Last month, we had a real busy month with a lot of back-to-back negotiation sessions. We've come to a tentative resolution on a number of items. However, there are still some key items outstanding, and we have not reached a final agreement. However, it's going to be our recommendation, and we think it's a good idea, that the city provide a unilateral, unnegotiated benefit to its firefighters. Therefore, we're recommending changes beginning the second pay period in January to certain certification, firefighter certification values as follows. For the firefighter certification, we're recommending an increase at the intermediate level from 90 to $100. The, these are monthly certification values, from 90 to $120. At the advanced level, from 150 to $175. At the master level, from 180 to $225. For the airport rescue certification, we're recommending an increase, a monthly increase from 50 to $100. For the dive rescue certification, we're recommending an increase from 50 to $100. For the EMS certification, we're recommending a, a monthly increase at the basic level from 50 to $150. At the intermediate level, from 150 to $250. At the paramedic level, from 250 to $350. We're also recommending the addition of two new certification categories, and one for hazardous material certification in the monthly amount of $50, and one for instructor certification in the monthly amount of $50.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one question. On the hazardous material instructors, you moved everybody in the department from 50 to 100. On every other category, all the other categories, you basically doubled them.
That's a new certification, Commissioner?
Well, all, all the things you mentioned was like 150 to 250, or 50 to 100.
No, not all of them were the same.
The, the only category that increased by $100 at every level was the, was the EMS certification.
Why would we start at 50 again, then?
This is, this is a new certificate. Both the hazardous material and the instructor certification are new certification amounts that, that haven't been paid, have never been paid in the city. So, that, that's our recommendation that we-
My concern is an old number. It's a number we've used for a long time, and we're trying to get away from the 50 by going from 50 to 100 on some of these other categories you mentioned. Why shouldn't we just start at 100 in those two?
Well, it's, it's our recommendation that, that we begin at 50. It's, it's been one of the points during our negotiations, that, that is, that would be an acceptable value. It's acceptable as far as finance is concerned. We run these numbers by finance, and we think it's-
How many people does that affect?
The hazardous material certification will affect about 15 firefighters. The instructor certification will affect about 27 firefighters.
Thirty-seven. No, 42. Twenty-seven and 15?
Twenty-seven and 15 total between the two, between the two amounts.
It just seems to me, if we're trying to move our, our people up, as far as-
But they haven't gotten this pay at all, because in the past-
I know, I know. But, you know, it's, to me, 50 starting, you know, pretty much the bottom of the barrel. It's just my opinion.
Let me ask you something. People that aren't hazmat certified-
Yes.
They're not going to get nothing, right?
Not for a hazardous material certification, no.
And so, some of the people that are getting some of these certifications will get something. What about the people that maybe on their last few years that crossed over for EMT and just want to ride out their last three years? They're not going to get nothing? We're not going to get no cost of living, no, no type of, you know, I mean, they're not going to get nothing?
Let me make it, let me make it clear, Commissioner. What we're talking about here, our recommendation involves a unilateral, unnegotiated increase that will be provided by the city to the firefighters.
This is not the new contract.
This is not part of our negotiation. Negotiations will continue and not, you know, not be affected by, by the city's unilateral action tonight. This, this is an action that we're recommending involves strictly certification pay. We're not talking about any salary increase at this point.
It will be on top of salaries.
It'll be on top of whatever else we're able to negotiate in the, in the collective bargaining setting.
All right. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna-
Hold on, hold on.
Hear what he did.
The effective date will be the second pay period in January.
He did. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait and abstain, because I don't know. You know, we, you just gave us this today.
All right. We have one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you. Item 11.
Item 11, consideration in action to accept the 2005 CIP Street and Drainage Contract Number Three project and to release retainage and final payment to GNT Paving Incorporated.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this is a street project, included two streets, West Fifth and Riverside. All the work has been completed and found acceptable.
Any questions?
Approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Carlos, that was a good picture of your son on the paper the other day.
Right.
Item 12.
Item 12, consideration in action to authorize the Brownsville Fire Department to accept a grant in the amount of $35,000 from the Texas Department of State Health Services for the purchase of a new ambulance.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, we were lucky enough to receive a grant from the Department of State Health Services of $35,000 to, for a purchase of a new ambulance for the City of Brownsville. We're here before you to ask permission to accept it.
Chief, so moved. I'm sorry, for the motion. The ambulance costs $35,000?
No, sir.
(laughing)
The ambulance usually runs at an average of about-
A real small one with no equipment.
$95,000 to $100,000.
No wheels.
Pete's already set up the funding.
Where's it coming from, this grant?
From the Texas Department of State Health Services, which is the old Department of Health.
Don't move, man.
The fully loaded ambulance runs about 90 to 100 grand, right?
About $95,000 to $100,000.
That's before equipment's put on it, huh?
Yeah. Before we put all the rest of the equipment in there.
Motion to approve.
Well, we have, we had a motion to approve by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item 13.
Thank you, sir.
Item 13, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of two new 2007 model 12-passenger vans to be used by the Brownsville Fire and Police Departments.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for the aforementioned project. Sealed formal bids were opened for the subject project on December 20, '06. Total of two bids were received and tabulated by the purchasing contracting office. In keeping with city purchasing requirements, a independent cost estimate report was, was provided by, by the fleet administrator. The recommendation- The recommendation is, is as follows. Uh, consideration in action to award a contract for purchase and, uh, and, uh, delivery of two new '07 model 12-passenger vans to be used by the Brownsville Fire and Police Departments to Tipton Motors, Inc. of Brownsville, Texas. The low-responsive bidder in the amount of $22,114.42 each, for a total of $42,228.84. Funding is available for this project from account 54321943, 200 CO Fund from Fire Department, and account number 29, State Forgiveness Fund from the Police Department. I recommend approval.
Alright, any questions? Motion to approve by Commissioner Longotti, seconded by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Next item?
Item 14, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three set, of three new sets of mobile bleachers for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, Happy New, Happy New Year to you. Uh, the Purchasing Department has solicited proposals from Sentry Industries for the purchase and delivery of three new sets of mobile bleachers, which will be used by our Parks and Rec Department. This department has worked together with Sentry Industries representatives to select the proper type of mobile bleachers for their needs. The project consists of the purchase and delivery of three new sets of mobile bleachers, which will allow the seating capacity of 180 spectators in 10 rows for each set of mobile bleachers. Sentry Industries is the TexMas contract awarded contractor for these mobile bleachers. TexMas Sentry Industries quote is attached for your consideration in action this evening. We recommend approval. Uh, the total value of this procurement is $80,000. It's funded...
What parks are they going to, Paul?
I'm sorry?
Parks are they going to?
Which particular parks? Well, they're mobile, so they won't be installed in any one particular...
But are they being bought to go to a certain place at the beginning, like where? Or are they just being bought to put, I don't know, anywhere you want? Skip, let Skip answer that question.
I don't know where Skip's gonna storm. He can address that.
Are you just gonna storm?
What these mobile bleachers are for is for special events, Sombraro Festival, uh, things we do downtown, and instead of us having to pick up bleachers, put them on trailers, hurt people, we're buying these. We can, uh, fold them up, pull them with a pickup truck, and they're in place.
When they're using them at Sombraro Fest and events like this, will they be renting them from you, or will you be lending them to them?
No, we're co-sponsors with Sombraro Fest and the other events. If other people from outside of what we normally work with would like to rent them, we can probably accommodate them.
Thank you, Skip.
This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item 15, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one new mobile event stage for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor and Commissioners, the, uh, Purchasing Department has solicited proposals from Sentry Industries for the purchase and delivery of this mobile stage, which will be used primarily by the Brownsville Parks and Rec Department. The department has worked together with Sentry Industries representatives to select the proper-style mobile event stage equipment, which will include a 36-foot-long enclosed stage body, an 18-inch-deep steel channel mainframe, a 36-foot full-down stage deck with skid-resistant surface pattern, leveling legs, and 125-pound live load capacity per square foot. Hydraulic operation, stage canopy that extends beyond the main stage for maximum protection. I think we have some photos. This is rather elaborate piece of equipment. They're also including in their options a, a total sound package and lighting package, like you see there. Our recommendation is that you, uh, award this contract to Sentry Industries. The total value, including the options and delivery, is $120,000. Again, funding is derived through, uh, Parks Operations Budget this year.
I definitely think that this is something that should be looked at as far as, um, maybe not a money-making, but that certainly can generate some funds, because this is something we've been looking for, for a while, from, just not from our own need, but I think other people will certainly be interested in this, so...
Now, mind you, I know you said we're the co-sponsors, okay? But I'm looking at this, and I know where this is headed, okay? You know where I'm coming from, 'cause I work in this business, okay? You know that every year, Sombraro Festival pays for the rental of the sound, for the rental of the stage. Now, I don't wanna take away from anybody, but this is money that can be made. This is, this is not an inexpensive piece of material. You know, and I don't wanna make the money back in a year, but if it's possible, you know, let's try and, let's work something out.
Now, the stage is something we're gonna be charging for, because we have to have money coming in every year to keep it maintained and keep it, you know, keep it in working operations.
But this is just for the stage, right?
Stage, right.
Okay, when it comes to sound, uh...
Sound, we, we haven't worked out everything on that, 'cause we're gonna do separate contracts for different things, and, uh...
Talk to me about that, Skip, because if you're gonna go with an outdoor PV sound, but that's something you and I'll talk about later, an outdoor PV sound won't work. What they're, what they're proposing there won't work. They're just giving you something at a decent price that's not gonna deliver what we need, and we can actually get it at a better price locally.
Well, we're, we're trying to get this, 'cause we've had several conversations with several other people. We couldn't come to a consensus, so we had to do something to get something going, so this is what we're going with.
I think, I think it's, it's needed, but it's gotta be utilized in the best-form fashion, like Commissioner Longotti has alluded to, and like I just said a minute ago, so... Uh, Jim, I think you need to be involved with regards to the drawing up of the contracts from a, uh, from a different, different aspect, not just from my, from my revenue generating point, but also from a liability and indemnity standpoint. Alright, uh, any other questions?
I have one. The, um, you said with all the options? So you're talking about it's coming with lights and sound and everything?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, is that...
It's, uh, for the 120 that's included, it's, it's, it's got a...
There's a listing of the, of the extra items at the end of the items.
Okay.
I think the stage itself is around 77 or 80, and then the other...
That's the base price.
Yeah. Any other questions? Alright, this is an action item? Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longotti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, we have one public comment, Mr. Fernando Ruiz, regarding a referendum on impact fees. You have three minutes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you before you start, but I just wanna reiterate that we're not allowed to address Commissioners by name, and the other...
I am familiar with the process, sir.
I think you are.
Thank you kindly.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Now, let me introduce myself. My name is Fernando Ruiz. Commissioner, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. I have kept up with the, uh, issues of what's going on with the impact fees since it has been going on since, uh, the 1990s, and there's so much controversy, you know. I, I've lost touch. I don't really know where, where I'm at, you know? And a lot of people that, that you represent are, are not, uh, aware of what really is going to take place, you know? Are these impact fees going to be for a year, two years, three years? You know, we need more information, more communication with the constituency. What, what we need to do, also, if, you know, we select a committee, will every one of you, the members of the commission, select a person or two? Well, we haven't gotten anywhere, because if you're going to select someone, you have to make sure that they're not biased and there's not a conflict. And the list that I, I read this morning, I see maybe one or two where a conflict exists. So I say, you know, we, let's do, let's do it right, you know? I'm sure you have, you have a lot of responsibility, but you have a responsibility to the constituency, you know? This is who placed you here, and I'm not trying to, to impress you with that, but we, we have to remember that this is where it began, you know? When you went out to ask for the vote of the people and told them that you were going to take care of the public trust, we are not going to be able to have the monies right now. You know, the, the bubble of the real estate is bust, bust, burst. So things are going to change in the economy, a, and we need to be prepared. A, a, and I think that the, the people should, should be able to decide on this, you know? And say, you know what, we've had so many things going on, uh, PUB made a study for a quarter of a million dollars, now we're gonna have an economic study, and wah, 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 you know? We haven't gotten anywhere, and yet, are we considering the people of Brownsville? So then I say, and I ask this commission to consider placing subject matter on referendum, and that, uh, the, uh, the interested parties inform the public, let, let them make the expense of informing the public what they wanna do, like, like when you want bond money, you know, same way. Hey, this is how it's gonna be. This is the picture. This is the truth. This is what we have to expect in the short term and the long term. We haven't seen that, you know? So how can we sustain you or back you i- if we're not well-informed? You know, I think that is one of the problems right now. We have lack of communication. And then I say, okay, fine, then, let's place it in the hands of the constituency. Let them decide, you know, this is a hard decision. Everybody that is concerned has their agenda, and they have not been able to reach a consensus. Why? Because there's special interests. I don't know. But you know, I want to be done what's best for the City of Brownsville.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Thank you for your comments. Uh, let me take this opportunity on behalf of myself and the entire City Commission to wish all the citizens of Brownsville a very safe, healthy, and prosperous New Year, and welcome everybody back to an exciting 2007. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Happy New Year.